Regular meeting the zoning commission to order. We have three regular meeting members who are not going to be here tonight, so we will appoint Jackie and Tucker as members for this evening. And if Melissa shows up, she can join too.
Okay.
But, okay, that's where we are. First order is the approval of minutes of the May 16th meeting. Anybody have any comments about it? I read it. I didn't see anything.
I read it too, Mr. Chairman, but I'm going to abstain because I wasn't there.
Okay.
Well.
I wasn't either.
Or is that what?
We're not going to get four votes, so we need to move on.
Okay. We'll table the meeting minutes for another day. Okay, the next order of business is to go to general commission business. I don't believe we've had any new business that's appeared since these were published. Gee, it's different with George over there. We have a, what am I reading? The last year's minute, or last week's minutes. Referral from the planning director. Can you explain what it is that, we've gone through this a few times.
We have gone through this a couple of times, but not formally. Including your drop box there is a formal letter on behalf of Silverman. Silverman, look at Silverman. Yeah. Silverman. Group, they are formally requesting that the commission consider amending that condition number 13. Now, you did talk about it. I figured since the applicant submitted a formal letter to us, that we would bring it to you, either for your decision or for action. So this is a, condition number 13 is a condition at the ridges which requires both shell buildings to be completed prior to the issuance of more than nine, of occupancy permits for more than 90% of the residential units. In this case, the applicant is asking for relief from that in order to exceed that 90% threshold. And I'll kind of let them describe it. I think in the, in my, in my memo, I said that it requires certificates of occupancy for the shell buildings. Of course, the shell buildings don't get significant certificates of occupancy. We just deem them to be approved or completed. So you've got one shell building done, completed, the other one under construction, so not completed. Therefore, we will not issue, based on that condition, any more occupancy permits for residential units above 90%. So that's what the applicant said.
How do you determine that a shell is completed?
We, we use the building officials determination that all of the inspections are completed except for the interior renovations.
Okay. So there's a, there's a criteria that's, that's applied. Okay. And is there some basis for this change, I guess?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, it's nice to see you finally.
Again, George McGregor set out what the issue is. We wish a modification of the condition in a manner to allow the release of eight units which are completed before the issue, before the issuance of the completion certificate for the second commercial building. Why do we, why do we feel we would like you to consider this? Because we have fully permitted and constructed eight units that have anxious tenants to move in. They're empty, and that would allow them to avoid having stranded investment in empty properties. There's a use value for the tenants, there's an economic value to the landlord, and the town will benefit of tax where the CO makes it eligible for the tax list upon issuance. The buildings are completed and done. Taxes is a significant aspect of Talke Ridge. Right now, it's on the grand list for $45 million, $31 million assessed, and it pays $1,050,000 a year in taxes. And these eight units would continue to add to that grand list. If you allow the issuance of these eight certificates of completed buildings, they will, they will accelerate to the grand list immediately, eligible to be picked up by the assessor immediately and taxed at full value. Why wouldn't you consider it? Well, you guys set a rule, and we knew that, and you set a rule in that condition 13, which by the way, the, the letter of approval of June 2nd, 2017, I believe is the most elaborate, technical listing of conditions on a development ever in the town. And I mention that because 13 now we're seeking relief from, but this developer in the town, this developer is an owner who holds things long-term, and they're an investor in the town, and they're at long hold, and they have gotten along remarkably well with the town. There hasn't been a single issue. They've been great to work with. The developer will tell you the town's great to work with, the town staff will tell you the developer's great to work with. So there's an excellent relationship there, which should be, which we should leverage and keep on going. But you set a rule, and we made a decision and came to you with a pretty lengthy discussion about the fact that the commercial market is dead, it's very inactive, very difficult, and we came in and we said we'd like to convert one of those buildings to 11 one-bedroom units. And we had a good discussion on it, a lot of dialogue. You saw our side, we saw your side, and you said no. And we got that. And, and we got that loud and clear. So now, we've redesigned that building. When we got that no from you, we went and tried to do a different form of, of commercial building, and frankly, that wasn't very much liked by, by the staff or you either. And we went through the design review process and the zoning process, and all of a sudden, we've got a much better design. So, so our mistake of going forward trying to convert it to apartments is in, in the mirror. I believe in your package, you've got pictures of the stage of construction. That process took, took a long time. The other process of building those units continued on to the fact that eight are done and 20 more will be done soon. And so, you set the rule that you wanted commercial development there. We tried to change that, and you said no, and we said fine. And now we've got a quarter million dollars already spent on that commercial, the second commercial building. We're not going to stop, and we, we want to retreat from a bad idea. We would like the relief so that we could get the, the units, the residential units in use and occupied. So the process got us a very good design. There have been delays, and we'd say that some of the delays are beyond our control. We had delays with COVID, we had delays with supply chain, we had delays with labor, and we had, you know, the big problem is the change in, in problems with the commercial markets. And also, the change in design, which we kind of caused ourselves, took extra time. So now, we're there with eight units that have people who want to move in, they're fully done, and we'd like to find some way, if you could find us some way, that we could get those certificates of occupancy free and clear. I think that it's clearly within your power under the Form-based Code, and you could delegate to staff, or you could do it, but we would very much like you to do that. Our other reasons are the success of the project. It's an extremely successful project. It's, it's intense, it's big. That's the way the town participated in a Form-based Code zoning of that parcel even before Silverman bought it. Also, the relationship between the staff and the builder is excellent, and it's characterized by good faith, fair dealing all around. And so, we'd like to talk with you about any way that you can do to try to free up the issuance of those. I do recommend it. I think that the reason that you had that condition 13 in there was you thought that the developer would walk away from the commercial buildings there, and I think that we tried to change the thing lawfully, and you said no. And so, we're fully committed to that second commercial building. It's under construction, the footings are in, and we would really like you to consider some relief to get those units occupied and to let us continue on, and we'll come back if, and update you as to how we're doing with the building.
Thank you. Commissioners have questions?
Well, in the last paragraph of the letter, you indicate that you'll be coming back again with a similar request, so you obviously have something in mind as far as splitting the difference. Do you have like an ultimate plan that you're asking for so that we can kind of anticipate?
Yes, that's a Silverman letter from the company, not my letter, and I don't want it to be confusing. I think that was, I think that was candid and appropriate on her part. We expect, we expect to be done.
Excuse me, TJ, can I interrupt you for a second? We have a late arriving alternate who's going to be deputized to be a.
Quorum?
No, we have a quorum, but you are now sitting for a missing alternate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I apologize. Tried to plug on.
Commissioner, hello, how are you? Welcome. Commissioner Beinstock, that letter refers to the fact that there are, there are eight units that are fully complete right now.
Right.
There are 20 more units.
You're going to keep working on.
No, they're substantially complete, but they're not complete. And so, the, our attorney at the company wanted you to know that we might have another request on this, but at that time, we'll come in and show you our progress if we need to make that request.
Oh, okay, all right.
But it is possible that we would need to make that request because we're projecting completion of that building four months out, three to four months out, and you know, we got light steel in the building and some other materials that.
Yeah, okay.
We could have supply chain issues.
Okay. Heather, Bruce?
Well, let me offer this. I think that we're not all in the same understanding of the condition number 13, TJ. And I, you have the letter from the company attorney. Let me just ask you this, is the, the quote of reading starts with "The applicant shall begin." That's, that's portrayed as condition number 13. Is that the same wording as the document you held up a couple of minutes ago that is the agreement? The agreement was signed that's so technical and so well done. Does that wording match the wording that she wrote quoting condition number 13? Is her condition number 13 the same as you're referring to in the letter of approval?
Can staff speak, Mr. Chairman?
I don't think that's necessary. You don't have the, the letter in front of you, do you? TJ referred to it a couple of minutes ago, the approval letter.
Oh, we have it. Don't we? Come on.
Let's come back to that if we need to.
I think they're identical. They're identical, okay.
It's on the screen, it looks like that.
Yeah, the letters down here.
So, it looks to be identical.
Is that the, the letter? That looks like it might be the minutes of the meeting.
This is the, this is the signed letter, sir.
Okay.
Oh, no.
And they're identical.
The condition of approval.
I was going to say, I don't think it's correct.
The letter of approval dated June 2nd, 2017.
Right.
And they match?
Yeah, this is the signed approval.
Okay. Okay. So, here's the thing, that when, when I voted to approve the trade-off of the smaller units for the larger building, I, and you had an approval for a project of 280 units, total residential units. It was 280, and then the shuffle of some in, some out, you were up to 299 approved. I intended that the existing condition number 13 translated immediately, we raised the number of approved units. So the 90% authorization in my mind approved, applied to the 299. No one said it didn't. I voted, and I thought, and maybe, you know, it's our fault for not having a fuller discussion, but I, I expected the 90% standard would then translate to the new number, which is 90% of 299. Which means instead of 252, you get 269 before there's a threshold issue. You can't go past 299 until the two commercial buildings are shelled. And my, my point, and I think, you know, it's covered now, but we, I was thinking that, I don't know if the construction industry has a standard definition for shelled, but I was thinking that we look at the one building that hasn't been worked on in years and call that one shelled, and then this one needs to reach that level. So, when this one reaches that level, then you can go past, in my mind, you can go past the 269. All of which is to say, right now, the difference between 252, which the attorney cites as the ceiling, 252, my, my understanding from, for the last couple of years now is that that number's not 252, it's 269. And with that difference of 17 units, the town staff can go ahead and issue 17 more COs on residential units. I'm, I'm assuming that there's, you're stuck now at 252. I, I've never seen that written down anymore, but, so if you can go, if you feel like you're stuck at 252, I don't feel that way, I think you can go to 269. I'm not excited about making exceptions to agreements that were made in years in the past, although I'm, I'm just saying that I, I think that the issues being raised right now is subject to some, you know, more thorough understanding of what was intended when we voted on it. So if you can do 269, you're set for 17 more, eight of which are basically imminent, and there's eight more that are referred to.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Elliot, if I may, it's staff's understanding that we are at 269, and that is why we haven't been issuing any more certificates of occupancy. So, based on our count, they've reached that threshold, 269.
Okay.
So that letter is an error.
Yeah.
From the, from, 269 is where they're at today.
Okay, so my expectation and understanding, that when we raise the number of units, it raises the 90% number. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And that sometime in the near future, there's going to be a request for more. If this is approved, there's going to be a request for more, I think that's what this letter says. She doesn't say what will happen if this isn't approved.
We're going to move diligently on our construction project of the shell, and we don't anticipate, we anticipate that the units that are under construction that have full building permits will probably be completed before. I think it's a power that you have. I think that you, I think that you properly and appropriately put in the requirement of a commercial balance to this site, and I think that you put in that clause to make sure that there was no disincentive on the commercial and that it would be built. And at this point, I believe we've demonstrated that we're building them. I mean, they're under construction, a quarter million bucks is spent, and they're going to build them. So, I know it's in your power to give us a waiver, and that means it's in your power to deny us. And I'm just very hopeful that, that we won't have a waste of that economic value, and it's not like this is a developer who's been speaking, sneaking around corners on stuff. Everything we've done has been done in this town hall. We have had remarkable cooperation with town hall all the way, and we are a cropper of the requirements which you imposed and which you have a right probably to stick to. We're a cropper of that, but we're saying, these are unique times, the market is what it is, the commercial market is what it is. We've got beautiful townhomes in Simsbury, eight of them ready to occupy, and this board has to say, yeah, that's okay under the circumstance, and impose whatever condition you want on us. But, but we're hopeful that, you know, this has been an extraordinary good relationship. This is an extraordinarily good taxpayer, an extraordinarily good citizen town, and we're hopeful that you, you'll take a look at your power to grant this and allow us to proceed. That's our little question.
I think, I just want to make sure that we're all clear. The reason, the largest reason why that second shelled building isn't shelled is because the Silverman group didn't build it. You just started on it after the last meeting. Now, we, there was an approved building that was 8,000 some odd square feet that has been dismissed. And what we approved, although it's not mentioned in this letter, is a building of some 16,000 square feet, a two-story instead of a one-story building. And so, it's going to take longer to shell it because it's bigger.
Yeah, but also that, there was no commitment as to how quickly anything would build out. That, they didn't use dates, they used percentages. They used percentages because we're in a market economy.
That's fine with me.
It's the largest investment ever in Simsbury.
One at a time.
Largest investment ever in Simsbury, and they made it, and they kept it in good faith, and they brought it forward, and the quality is excellent, and, and they're all approved. And what happened was the market distorted, and we didn't want to, they didn't want to start that second building because the first building kind of looks like the old curiosity shop, and, and the new building looks a lot more like what people in the commercial spaces are looking for today, we hope. But there aren't many of them, but we're going to stand to the market like we promised and try to get that occupied. It is our fault that it took us time to try to cut it, convert it to apartments, and then be denied, which was fine, and then try to come forward with a design which the design review board dropped us right on our heads, and we came up with a very nice design. That new design is a very nice design, and we're going to build it. But we're asking you, we're not telling you what to do.
Do you have a time estimate for that new building?
We're using four months right now because of supply chain and labor and everything else.
Jackie?
I have to agree with Bruce. We have already raised the threshold to give you more units, and if you had chosen, or Silverman had chosen, to build this building, you would, this would not be an issue. So Silverman decided not to build this building, which is fine, but now we're at the threshold. So this was the same promise we talked about last month that you were in.
Yeah, it is, but we're asking you, we're not telling you. I mean, you're right, but the point is you have a power to relax that standard in the circumstance, in a time of COVID and labor and our mistake and everything else, but I mean, it's not like we're some stranger to town. We are an established entity in town, we've stood behind everything we've done. I think that if you talk to any member of the staff, you'll say that their cooperation is remarkable.
There's no question. I think we're just asking you to keep up your end of the bargain at this point.
We're saying that it, it's a, we're saying it's a significant loss to the town, taxpayer dollars, our dollars, and it, there's, there doesn't seem to be any reason for it. The reason you put the standard in was to make sure we were doing the commercial, we're going to do the commercial.
Right.
So we, we just want you to give us a break.
Yeah.
And that's what we're asking for.
That's fair.
We're not telling you, you can do what you want.
Excuse me? I don't know about your. Sure. Can we just make reference to the fact that part of redesigning that space? I'm sorry. For the record, stand up and tell them. If I may, this is you, Ugo Rosini, that needs the Silverman's presence in Simsbury.
So, part of the redesign of, of the building, to make it different than the first building that was built, and I'm sorry for my voice being like this, was to make it a flexible building. We built the first, the smaller retail building that sits up there right now, that's built exactly to the approved planning documents from 2017. It's exactly the way Minow and Wasco drew it, and reconstructed it that way. The colors are the same, the windows, the doors, the hardscape. It's been sitting there for about two years. I have about $450,000, and nobody wants it.
Right.
So that made redesigning the second building, which is twice its size, a little more important to try and get it right. And, and we did make the mistake of trying to go to apartments. Can't say we didn't. But when we were pushed back on that, we designed a building now that's going to be set up for retail, just the way the revised plans show. I have a quarter million dollars into it already. I even hired an architect in Georgia because my local architect needed three months to start, put pencil to paper, so I hired an architect in Georgia to get on this right away. In a couple of weeks, we'll have the shell design and, and get going on it. So that's real, it's going to be built.
Beautiful.
And it's going to be, it's going to be great, and I, we hope that it does go retail. It would be nice to have a little retail on the front of our property, but somebody has to, you know, take it. So I just wanted to.
Thank you.
Describe that. That building is also capable to go, if, in two years, if it stays empty, we might, we might have to switch it again.
Understood.
But that would be, come in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you have your shell design of the second building complete in two weeks? Is that what I heard?
No.
Two weeks out? It's based on what we presented on those Zoom meetings two months ago. It's going to look just like this, it's going to be detailed for construction.
Mr. Chairman, one other thought. In circumstances like this before, the building department has, or the zoning authority has allowed temporary building permits or conditional building, conditional permits of occupancy, and that would continue the hold of the town on a final permit. It would keep some responsibility still in the land, in the landlord, and it would freeze the, nobody would buy it, nobody, no bank would lend on it. But we're willing to take that risk if we got conditional certificates of occupancy.
Are these purchase and sale agreements, or are they rentals?
They're all rentals.
They're all rentals?
Yep. Silverman's going to own these.
So if we gave you a temporary occupancy and something happened, we could say they have to leave?
Right, yes. Well, if the, if we didn't complete that building by X, you could, that could be the condition.
The staff have any comment about that?
Are you talking about a temporary occupancy for the residential units?
Yes.
I think we would not be supportive of that. I mean, I think, I mean, if, if folks are going to move in there, we should give this, we should give the CO.
And they should have the security that they won't be kicked out.
But they're rental units, not sales. I mean, if you sold them, you know, you can't come back and take it away.
I understand.
If they're rental units, you know, they.
But are you going to kick them out in 30 days? I don't, I don't think we should do that.
It's just not a position that, that you want to put staff in.
No.
Okay. So that's not a good alternative. I don't like this, this business about, well, we've got these done, and, and we're getting problems getting things done on this side, and if we continue to have problems over here, we're going to want to do more here to get more COs and inching our way up, and then somebody's going to come back and say, weren't you guys smart enough to realize that they could change the whole thing over here? How do we protect ourselves against that?
What, what change?
You take the second building, and while you can't do it because of a supply and chain problem, one thing or another, you kick that along for six months, get the rest of the units built, and then come back to us and say, eh, we don't want to do that anymore. How do we protect ourselves against that? Our 90% threshold has been exceeded, we have no control with that.
Or are you compromising, you say, we'll give you eight, and that's it, don't come back again?
Okay, that's an alternative.
In good faith, we'll give you eight, but, but nothing else.
I'm not, I guess in a position to do that today, I'm not saying we don't revisit that, maybe that's something we could talk about, you know, in 30 days and see where they are, to, you know, to move that up. But I think Bruce had a good point that we did go up to the new threshold of 269.
I'm disappointed.
I would be okay with compromising, but I wouldn't hear another request.
Did we get any more affordable units for raising the threshold?
There are no affordable units in this.
It's too late for that anyway.
It's too late for that.
Well, I heard TJ say we could, you know, make any condition we wanted, so.
I think that's a.
Done deal.
Yeah, that's, that's a complication that would cost more attorney time than we have.
The letter talks about eight right now that are ready, that she wants CO issued on, and is alerting us there will be more, there'll be another request in the near future, words to the effect. And you mentioned 20 units are done, but they're, they're, you know, if you're at 269 now, there are only, there are only 30 more that are going to, that are authorized.
May I clarify that for you, because I don't know that number? How many units, there are eight that are done, how many units are still under construction beyond that?
We're looking for eight.
Yeah, but what's, what's the balance of the number to be concerned?
20.
There's an additional 20 approved beyond the eight.
There's 20 more units under construction.
Yeah, that they still need COs for.
Yeah, but I'm thinking, how many of those 20 are going to be completed after this shelled building is shelled?
My guess is those 20 would split, 10 would be done, would we be coming like this again?
So this letter refers to eight, you know, and then a similar request, so that, that might be eight, but without doing anything, you have a total of 17 available to you. Well, no, excuse me, that you stopped, because those additional units have already been authorized, they've already got COs. So there's 30 remaining in this project, and, you know, I can't, I just, I don't see us approving 30, 30 units without seeing those buildings shelled. That's, it's ridiculous.
Mr. Chairman, you, you.
I'm having a hard time hearing, so I'm not being rude, I just can't hear you.
You said, how can we make sure that they'll stay online? If this were some kind of a utility, you could, and in this circumstance, you possibly could require a bond that would be conditioned upon completion of that building. And that would lock us in, and that would hurt us, but that would be better than having unused units out there.
Mr. Chairman, I have a thought.
Yes.
So. So TJ's saying it's going to be about four months. So what if we gave two units and then we talk in 30 days? And then we see where we are? And if we're going to approve two more. So they're asking for eight and they're asking for now. So-
Well, they have eight complete.
They have, right.
And they have eight people ready to move in.
But if we give approved two, so we can see the progress of this building.
I don't, I don't see that. I see that if they have eight-
Yeah, I was just trying to give-
Eight rental contracts in their face.
I was trying to give a compromise instead of-
And eight people might have been.
Who doesn't help us?
You know, that's, that's a decision I think I'd be hard pressed to, to not find a way to accommodate.
I was just trying to give a compromise.
But coming back with 20 more-
Right.
Before the completion of the commercial building, and then who knows what happens if we give them the 20 with the commercial building?
Correct.
I think we'd be, we'd be-
Silly.
Silly. So TJ has said, okay, let's put up a bond and let them suggest that they put up a bond for the completion of the commercial building.
The shelled.
The shelled.
Shelling of that.
Right. And so the question is, what would be a reasonable bond?
Well, and can we have staff's input on this?
We can ask anything.
Okay.
But-
What's your thought on this, George?
So, 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 say that one more time.
What, we're concerned about giving them permission to build more or get more COs beyond the eight to 20. When they get to 20, we're out of leverage as far as making sure that the commercial building is built. Okay? So my question was, what do we do about that? And TJ suggested that we establish a, require them to post a bond that would be satisfied by the completion of the shell of the second commercial building. That would cost them a little bit of money.
Sure.
And, but it would give us surety on the completion of the shell building.
Would that be in lieu, I mean, we would give them all the COs then? In lieu of-
Well, we haven't, we haven't, we did our discussion.
I would not be willing to give them all the COs.
Could I, could I offer just an opinion, a thought? I work with a lot of people who are really looking for housing in Simsbury. There's a long waiting list for housing in Simsbury. And with the recent housing crisis, I would be disinclined to not agree to anything that would increase the residential capacity that we have in Simsbury.
I'm sympathetic with that. I think, I think the rest of the people are. We're more concerned with how did we get ourselves in this box.
Their people stuck together for the longest time right now.
Five years ago, we were so smart. We said, okay, 90% completion or else, you know? And so now we're stuck where things have all juggled around. We've had all kinds of excuses.
Understood. But this is a promise that they made.
I understand.
Part of the approval.
We've had all kinds of things happen. And they're asking us to make an accommodation and change in the contract that would satisfy people. And I think the bond idea has one, has a great thing in that it lets them finish the, the building of the units, get people into them.
And maybe withhold those last 10 that he said might not be done by, before the building's done.
Okay, well, that's a choice we could make.
Well, I'm just saying, those, those 10 are floaters right there.
Okay, he did say that. So, so if we said, let's consider giving them permission for 18 units, and in exchange, they post a bond of $17 million?
$600,000.
20 million. You're quibble.
Based on a million with, with 400, nearly 300,000 spent, $700,000 bond.
George?
So I think two things at least. First is, I mean, I personally, and I think, a speech from staff, I don't think there's a particular fear that the shell building is not going to be completed. Right? So I mean, I don't think there's a particular fear that they're going to walk away from the shell.
I think you could find people in this town who would say, they're going to come back here in a year and say, we want to make that apartment.
Well, hey, that's different. And that's a different application. And you'd be faced with a decision at that time. The second, I mean, this is about an original agreement that aimed to achieve balance in a mixed use development.
Yes.
Right? That was the original intent. We wanted the residential. We wanted a little piece of commercial.
Well, they wanted more than a little piece, but they settled for a tiny piece of the project.
Sure. So, so I guess I would say this then, is that if, if it's the desire to try and achieve a balance, then the condition ought to remain as it is. But if you're convinced that the marketplace is a little bit different today, then I think it opens the door for the completion of the residential pieces of beyond the 90%. I mean, I think there's two ways to look at it. Finally, the, you know, bonding is complicated for staff because if you, if you play out the bond process and the developer defaults on the bond at some point, you'd be asking the town of Simsbury to build residential units, or, excuse me, to build out the commercial shell.
Oh, so it changes the responsibility?
Yes. I mean, the only folks who would, I mean, the bond would be for, for, for the town to-
The town would find another developer or seller or whatever. But-
Anyway, it's, it's more complicated. So I'm trying to simplify it, which is, if there's an expectation for balance and mixed use-
It's more complicated. It's not, you know, it's, it's a fact. That's just where it is. It's complicated because the developer doesn't want to adhere to the agreement that they signed in the years gone by. They want a different deal now. And so we need to look at the whole picture. And we need to realize that it's not just us. We, we got elected by the residents of this town to represent their interests. And so I recognize the economics of, you know, that you described TJ, and I don't doubt it. But it's not, it's not that easy. It's not just about the economics. And, and the fact is, we have no leverage. Once we start issuing those CO, the COs on these properties, they're just going to tick away and tick away. And they're going to come in every, every, could come to every meeting and say, well, we got four more. Well, we got four more. And you gave us those. And how about these? And what do we say? When do we say no?
The disappointment is-
When all 30 are gone and the shelled building isn't shelled, and all 30 COs are issued, where the hell are we? I mean, it's just, it's, it's kind of ludicrous.
The disappointment is that this is a message of distrust, negativism, and everything else. And there's so much of that.
TJ, you said that to us before, and we're here still. We're still partners in this project. And I'm fine with it.
We're partners in the next 130 acres. You know what? Our guy might go somewhere else. I'm telling you.
We can't control-
Your message is-
Time out, time out, guys.
Your own staff tells you it's highly likely that building's going to be built.
Time out. Let's, let's get back to, to how we can solve the problem.
I like the idea of a bond. It's just a matter of the amount.
So the last thing I would say to the bond is I would feel much more comfortable doing a real estimate and coming back with that. I'm not going to, there's no way I'm picking a number today out of my head.
Right.
This is reasonable or this is not reasonable. So I would ask you-
So we would table? So if, if we went that direction, sorry.
Let's table, let's table this until next meeting with the request that, that staff worked with the applicant to come up with a number. Well-
This would be for the, essentially the-
The commercial building.
Completion of the shell building, not the fit out, but simply the completion of the shell.
Correct.
Understood?
The M is requested to go to staff to work with them to get a number. So we're going to table today.
And I, I think that's a fair conclusion.
Thank you.
And it's two weeks, I'm sorry. But I, I think we need to solve the problem. And this seems to be a solution that might work.
Is it possible that the commission could empower staff to arrive at a number subject to the chairman's approval and have it done by two weeks?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so. I, I like the power, but no. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's move to table this discussion.
Do you want to motion?
Yes, why not?
I'll make a motion to table. It's not really a-
You know, I would, I would recommend not tabling it. I would simply move it to your June 20th agenda.
Got it. Okay. I'll make a motion to move this by June 20th.
Okay.
Second?
Second by Melissa. Discussion. All in favor?
I.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Anybody abstaining? Nope. It carries 6-0. Okay. So we'll move this to the next agenda. Okay. The next item is discussion of accessory dwelling units and possible modifications. We have, we have a draft that was put together with my help and George to try to meet the things that people talked about, kind of in agreement last time with the, I did add one little paragraph at the end about adding a benefit for accessible units. So I'll open it up for people to weigh in on their feelings on that draft.
I have a feeling about the attached dwelling units, accessory dwelling units. So my question would be why we would use a percentage to determine square footage and not just have a cap at the 1,000 square feet for any square footage dwelling unit. So in other words, smaller houses, instead of saying if they're less than 2,000, they can't have more than 40%. If it's an attached dwelling unit, I mean, you can build out your entire property, even if you have a small house. You can add as much as you want to it. So it's not really going to be differentiated as a detached unit. It's going to look like just somebody added on to their house. So I don't know why we would limit it to a 40%.
Because these are accessory dwelling units and they have to be emotionally, if you will, smaller than the main unit. And if you allow 50%, then you're creating duplexes. And I don't think that's what people want.
Well, 50% isn't a duplex, but-
Well, if you allow equal amounts of, that's the reasoning behind it.
Yeah, I just don't know why if you have a smaller house, you can't have a unit that is just as livable as a person with a bigger house. If it meets all the setback requirements, if the septic is going to support it, if, because otherwise, you're looking at 400 square feet. And if we're trying to have affordable housing in the town and, you know, housing for first responders or for single moms or handicapped people that might need help, that's not a livable space, in my opinion. I mean, it's just a discussion that I would ask.
A gentleman that was just here would argue with you because those, that's the space that, that's being rented. 400 square feet?
Well-
That's an apartment.
It's not, it's not a great apartment. I mean, if you're single and you're young or-
For one person.
Right, for one person, right. But, but not everybody with a 1,000 square foot house is going to want an ADU for one person.
Right. But that's a 1,000 square foot house. So that's a smaller house to start with. So I think the premise of when this was originally drafted, when we put our regulation together, was we were talking about the larger homes. And so they could have a significantly larger square footage ADU.
But why would they need it? They have a big home.
Because they had a family member.
We're, we're back into the rental world versus accessory dwelling units. And these were originally in-law apartments and got renamed ADUs because that's better.
Well, yeah, but now you're looking, you know, at a movement across the country to, number one, reduce small sprawl, number two, reduce apartments, which we've heard a lot about how many apartments we have.
Yep.
So here we have residential areas.
But we have people-
And we can have affordable housing that also adds to the value of your home.
Remember, we've had, I don't know how many public hearings where people came in and said, you're putting rental units in our neighborhood and, and they're ridiculous.
Yeah.
And what we're doing here is permitting accessory dwelling units. And we have to have some limit. We, we can't turn it into a duplex where you take a 1,000 square foot house and make it 50-50, 500-500.
You mean like a two-family home?
Yeah, like a two-family home. And that's the purpose. That's why it's-
In a single-family neighborhood.
That's why it's 40%.
There's a place for two-family homes.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. And, you know, if you get into more dense urban areas, there are preponderance of two-family houses. But, you know, we're, we're not in that world out here in Simsbury, at least in any of our zoning districts yet.
Well, maybe that's another thing we want to take a look at. Do we want to have, in addition to ADUs, do we want to look at, do we want more two-family home residential districts? That's just a thought. I know that's beyond the scope of this discussion, but that's another thought to have.
Right. That's another discussion.
Correct. We're talking about already established, though. And how do we work within that?
Anyway, comments from this side?
Well, Tucker, why don't you?
Tucker?
It seems like if people are, if the market is supporting larger ADUs, I don't, I don't know why it necessarily, I know it seems like it's a duplex, or it seems like it's become an apartment. But I don't know that size necessarily dictates exactly what the function of that, that building is, right? I mean, if it's, if it's large, or it's, it's large in comparison to the original dwelling, I don't necessarily understand why that's such a bad thing. I get, there's a perception there that it's, it's become an apartment. But if it's not, it's not. I don't-
Especially if it's attached. It becomes part of the, it reads as a single home.
Yeah.
I can understand a detached. I totally understand. You don't want a detached ADU looking bigger or as equally big as the house. But if you're adding on to a house, there's no like, there's no sign that it's being occupied by two different residences.
Okay. But you're talking about adding on to the 1,000 square foot house?
Well, yeah, because it's an attached dwelling unit.
Okay.
It's attached.
But if they want to expand their 1,000-foot square foot house, and they have it on the lot and it's legal, and they can make it 1,600 square feet, then once that 1,600 square feet, they can have 40% of that 1,600 square feet be the ADU.
Right. But what if they don't have the money or want 400 or 600 more square feet on their house before they can build the ADU? Why can't they build 1,000 square feet on their house that is the ADU? And it just looks like a 2,000 square foot house now. It was a 1,000 square foot house. I build another 1,000 square feet that is an ADU, but it just looks like a bigger house.
Is there a way to put up the, is there a way to put up here for us all to look at the state, the state ADU regulations that we've already, that we on zoning at least have opted out of? Because I think that they're talking about percentages as well, which are not 1,000.
We're more than 1,000.
Or 1,000 square feet.
Right. Do they differentiate detached or attached?
They do not.
And I think they should.
I agree with you, they should.
I think they should. I think there's a difference between the two.
And I think they'll be received differently.
One of the reasons why we advised the, we voted as a commission and we advised the Board of Selectmen of the same, that we reject the state statute that's been proposed and, and would not participate. Because, and one of the reasons is, there's no distinction between attached and detached.
Right.
And so we think we can do better for the town of Simsbury and our residents' interests by crafting our own regulations that be-
Correct.
Proceedurally-
I think we're a little off the track here, though.
Proceedurally, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Before we even get to the, are we opting out or are we not, we need to hear from the Board of Selectmen whether they too would like to opt out. So we could say this is what we're on.
We opted out.
But the Board of Selectmen has to-
The Board of Selectmen has opted out.
They did.
They do have to.
They do have- They do have to opt out.
They have not acted.
Right, but if we do our regulations and then the Board of Selectmen says, "No, we're not opting out," then we've done these regulations and they still don't count because the Board of Selectmen hasn't opted out.
You are correct.
So we put in the cart before the horse?
No.
No, we're giving.
We're giving the Board of Selectmen.
Regulation. We are fine tuning a regulation we already have.
To inform their decision.
To inform their decision. Gotcha.
Right.
And to be better than the one we had. Listening to the public hearing comments that we got, a lot of them were talking about having accessible units. And some of them talked about sizes. And I think we, this draft said, okay, on the smaller units, we'll let you go to 40%, which is not over 30%, which was what the state statute and our prior ADU was. And if somebody wants to expand their house from 1,000 to 2,000 square feet, they are then limited to 800 square feet as their ADU. And I don't see that as a, as a problem.
Well, but they're having to build 1,000 square feet to then build the ADU.
That's the ADU.
So I think it is important that we make it, that we differentiate in our regulations between attached ADUs and detached ADUs. Because my comment, but my prior comments about lot size being important, that really pertains to.
Detached.
Detached ADUs. And I still think that is a significant.
I agree.
Point for us to discuss. You know, it's different to put another.
Where in this document do you want to make changes? I guess let's talk about what we got to.
Why don't we deal with what we've got first and then the add-ons that Melissa and others might want to add on to it?
Yeah.
First, let's deal with the draft that's in front of us.
Well, I understand.
How about that?
Well, the first comment was in the, was Donna's.
Yeah, I would not differentiate, I would not differentiate an attached ADU's the size of the primary dwelling unit. I would just say 1,000 square feet, that's the cutoff. It's attached, it looks like the house, you can't have more than 1,000 square feet. That would be my choice.
Okay, I personally don't go along with that.
So that's one thought.
That's one thought.
Yeah, it's one thought, it's my thought.
Okay. Other comments on the draft that we have here?
So you would essentially just be striking the last section of that sentence under B there. So shall not exceed 1,000 square feet and then cut out or 30% of the gross floor area of the primary dwelling, whichever is less. That's the, that's the idea?
Well, yeah, B and C I wouldn't even have. I'd just say that, I wouldn't, it's just going to be 1,000 square foot max if it's attached.
Right. Okay. Just making sure I understood.
Yeah, that's just a thought.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, maybe the language needs to be more precise so that people read the word attached, realize it means internal to the dimensions of the residence. It doesn't mean it's a separate structure, you know, crafted onto. If there's no addition, it's still called an attached. There's only two categories, attached and detached.
Right, but if it's one building.
If it's not detached and the end product is one building, it's an attached ADU. Whether anybody did an addition or not, it's an attached ADU. But we can come back to them. I guess what I wanted to point out first on this, is I was the one who brought to attention in our discussion the last time, that the town of Canton just uses a 30% ADU limit. And they distinguish between attached and detached and they use a 30% limit. They don't have a square footage number in there. It's just 30%, whatever the house is, that's it. And that's what, you informed the Board of Selectmen at the meeting where they were considering our recommendation. I forget when that was, last week. But I thought that makes life easier. It's easier to understand, it's unmistakable. It's 30%. But.
It's uniform.
I'm not, yeah, but I'm not averse to something else. I mean, and I, I guess as I look at the idea of a threshold, as this is drafted, there's a threshold of 2,000 square feet. And if you are, your house is bigger than that, you get a smaller percentage than the other. If you're smaller than 2,000, you get a larger percent. But when you, when you actually lay these numbers out, and, you know, anybody's got a pencil or a calculator. If you have a 2,000 square foot house, you're entitled to a 30% of ADU. That's 600 square feet. If your house is 1,999 square feet, you're entitled to an 800 square foot ADU. So I'm not sure if, was that the intention that, you know, by the draftees, that the people with the smaller houses would have access proportionally to a larger, and in fact, larger ADU?
Yep.
In the smaller house?
That was the intent.
Theoretically, need more space.
Well.
Because if you have a 1,000 square foot house, you can only build 300 square feet.
In a 1,200 square foot house? I know, but I've seen a number of towns that use a minimum square footage, but. And so 400 or 450, somebody's using that. I saw it in one of the valley towns. And then it seems to me you have an issue because we've had, we had a recent approval of a requested ADU that was 450 square feet in a house that could have supported something much larger. But that's what they wanted. So if we said in the town of Simsbury, you can't have an ADU less than 500 square feet, somebody's going to complain. I mean, it doesn't matter where these numbers lie, there's going to be somebody that can complain. And so we could probably sit here debating this till cows come home and we're not going to find a number that nobody will complain about.
I don't think we need a number.
But I wanted to make another point, that's just my own personal point. My thought as we tackle the ADU and revising our regulation was, I voted that we would opt out and decline to participate in the state regulation because I don't think it's the right course. I think we should do our own thing. I didn't commit to sit down and negotiate and debate over how closely we can match the state statute. I don't want the state statute. I don't want the state making any more rules for us than is absolutely critical. So I'm not, I don't feel bound to the 1,000 square foot 30% figure that's in the state regulation. And I don't feel bound to the single definition of an ADU, no.
But those are what were in our, our last ADU thing before the state. It happens that the state had the same as we did, but.
I know, but it also seems like it was a pretty good idea. It's not just that the state came up with it that made it a good idea. It's reflective of what a lot of people think these days. So I think that. I'm not, I'm not enthusiastic about the schedule of the break the way it is now at 2,000 square feet. Once you go over that, you get a smaller. And, and when you're under that, you get, I mean, decreasing. But when you're under that, you get a smaller unit. So that, I'm not, again, enthusiastic about that, but I think. The final thing, Dave, that you brought up that you added on the thing about the ADA design standards and making available another 10%. My concern about that, as I've thought about the last couple of weeks, is I don't think that, I could be wrong, but I'm not sure that designed to meet the ADA design standards, our process would have to get us some guarantee. We're not architects. How would we know that what they've produced? And one applicant to the next, to the next, they're all citing the same FDA requirement.
Town building staff.
The town building staff.
I mean, every time we turn around, we're having to do something to create something that's ADU compliant. So I think there's somebody in the staff that knows.
Is there? We should name the person or the office. Or what?
Hank.
But maybe there's an office that could be named. My thought is that I'm not so concerned about detached because detached in this form frame are going to be subject to a special. Yeah, the public hearing, a special exception process. So if we don't like the ADA or whatever they're proposing. And it also occurs to me that if they need a hospital bed to fit in a room, you have to make the room larger. Is that an ADA standard? Is there an ADA standard for a bed?
No, but there is for bathrooms. You have to have 50, 50 square foot turning area for hanging.
Space around the bed.
Do we avoid most of these?
Does it have to be?
To accommodate wheelchairs.
Do we avoid resolution of most of these issues by simply saying 600 square feet or whatever it is? Or 30%, whichever is more?
No, that doesn't solve the problem.
Sure. Instead of whichever is less? So 600 or 30%, whichever is more, that means at a minimum, you get your 600. And if 30% is more, then you get 30%. Or 40% of whatever the number is that we arrive at. But then people are unduly restricted by having a smaller house to begin with. I mean, there are no 600 square feet houses in Simsbury, right?
There might be.
I think there's one that was nine, the one right by Henry James, that's true. You're right.
There's one on East Wheaton Street. Fellow named Dave Ryan lived there and burned it down. And it wasn't me.
Doesn't that run us into the same problem of forcing people to build at a certain size if they wanted to go smaller then? If you use the language whichever is more? So now you've, now you've put a lower limit on it, right?
They may build up to 600.
Up to?
Square feet or 30%, whichever is more.
Right.
If you only want 300, you just.
So then it can't be less unless I'm misunderstanding.
If you say up to 600.
So if you had up to 600 on a 1,000 square foot house, you could have a 400 square foot main house and a 600 square foot ADU.
Oh, so good luck to that guy then, you know? So that's his good fortune then, right?
What do you tell the public? Is this A or B?
That's his good fortune then.
You have a 1,000 square foot house and then you add the 600 on to it.
Then you get 1,600. Yeah, so you're, now you're at 1,600, not a total 1,000.
Right. So if you happen to have a 400 square foot house, you're right, under this, you can get an extra 600. More power to you.
But we've crossed off 600.
I'm just using that as.
Remember, this is a strike through version of your current regulations.
Correct, because I think 600 is.
That thought, I like that idea.
So an ADU could be up to 600 square feet.
Yep.
Or 30% of the dwelling size, main dwelling size.
Whichever's greater.
And that's whichever is greater.
Right.
Okay.
Even a blind squirrel finds a nut every once in a while.
How about that, George?
How about bigger than 600?
Up to 600, but not more than.
I'm not for that, but because.
So something a large, large house could have above 600.
No side discussions, please.
Stands in a zoning regulation.
Sorry, what?
The or more throws me a little bit, I just, I just don't.
Whichever is greater.
Whichever is greater.
Not the or more, whichever is greater.
So if you had a gigantic home, you could have a gigantic ADU.
You could. If you have a 10,000 square foot home, you want a 3,000 attached.
A 3,000 square.
Go for it.
Right.
Because I'm assuming at that point, you've also got, you've got a big old lot to go with it.
We have a case on East Wheaton, East Wheaton Street that you ought to go look at.
Okay. But it still has to meet all the setback requirements and all that sort of thing.
And with the smaller homes in this town, the lot sizes are small. You may have a septic.
So I mean, you have some boundaries already built in.
Okay.
Right.
Well, if you want to build a carriage house with 3,000 square feet next to your 10,000 square foot thing, I don't have any problem with that either.
In the neighborhood, you're far enough away that they won't.
Right.
And they would have to fit in the, on the lot, that stuff within the building.
You'd have to have sanitary.
Everybody's talking, Bruce?
We talked about the need for a better definition of what detached now and attached. Detached could be just something that, you know, you could have a 500 square foot building and then just put a little.
A breezeway.
Sheltered walkway over to the house.
I think it has to be enclosed.
No, that doesn't count.
Doesn't count for what?
As attached.
No, he was saying detached.
It's attached.
It has to be an enclosed connection.
For attached, you mean?
Does it say that? No.
So we said primary dwelling.
What was used in this case is, is, let me just read it. So one accessory dwelling unit in the main dwelling unit may be permitted, subject to. So we said in the main dwelling unit as attached.
So for instance, you couldn't have an enclosed, very long skinny hallway and then another unit and call it attached?
No.
I suspect we would not call that in the main dwelling.
Okay.
Same thing as a, you know, an outdoor.
Waterway.
Waterway.
Covered walkway.
We would call that a detached unit based on this definition.
Okay.
Okay, so.
In the main dwelling.
Given, given this, I think, agreement on 630% as written or as stated, we can compress A and B into one.
So for all units?
For all units.
No, 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 I mean.
So we're back to 600 now?
600 or 30%. Up to 600 or 30%.
Which is greater.
Which is, whichever is greater.
But George is asking, we would take out the 2,000 square feet?
Yes. We take out. In other words, B and C become one.
Right.
And you don't like the 600?
I don't think the 600. The same thing on detached.
Six.
No.
Come on, everybody, one at a time.
Do you want 35%? 600 or 35, whichever?
Yeah, I'm fine with 30.
30 is fine.
But Donna is not.
Oh, I'm just thinking.
She wants more.
And the same thing in detached units, George, B and C.
Yes, understood.
Get compressed. Okay, other, those are the sticky ones, I think. Curb cuts, no problems, no problems. Off-street parking.
Dave, why is E crossed out in accessible from the primary dwelling?
Because by a door, this was the thing about you had to have a door between the accessible unit and the main house.
Right.
Operable door. And we took that out because people said that was an oppressive requirement.
That was one of the items from the state law that gave relief.
State law.
State law was may. We had shall and we just took it out entirely, which still means may.
No.
Should not require. It was more like should not.
They cannot require.
Oh, they cannot require.
Yeah, the state law did not require.
We just dropped that because we put that in.
Yeah, I know we did.
In, in the last go-round when we changed it.
Because we had families saying.
Well, it was an attempt to restrict the rentals to people who were in the family.
You may still have it, but you don't have to have it.
So our concern, the last time we did these regulations and the reason we added that was because this ADU stays with the property. So when these people leave and they sell, now there's two units and there's no.
One smaller than the other.
And it still has to be owner-occupied.
We kept the owner occupied.
Right, you still have to do a lot next to them.
Either in one or the other. The ADU or the primary.
Owner-occupied is the important thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we took that out because of the state thing.
The other thing from the state law that we, there was the question about utilities, right?
Shared utilities. We required, we took that out.
That's just out.
We had required shared utilities. And we took that out.
Why did we take that out?
We took it out because the state took it out and it makes it more rentable if you can share or split the utilities. And there's no reason not to do that.
So the thought is to get more rentals?
The thought is to make it an easier thing to deal with.
It increases affordable housing options.
So the language would simply not require either shared or individual utilities.
Right.
You can choose one or the other.
But we're talking about now using the word rental instead of accessory dwelling.
No, I'm just saying that, well, you can rent them, okay? There's no doubt about that.
Right, can't restrict to.
Throw in my pen, but you're. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
So we're talking about what, again, going back to when we wrote this regulation, the concern that we got from the town was additional traffic, additional noise, that kind of a thing. So we're just saying that we're not paying attention to those things.
We're not, well, what happened is that we had a situation where on Pastor Lane, the.
Yep, I know.
John Hart wanted to rent, said he stated he wanted to rent it, and the neighbors went crazy.
Yeah.
And we thought, well, it'd be a good thing to put something that would make it more restrictive.
So why are we taking it out? Before you were back, we had.
Because we lost, we lost in court.
No, I've been on zoning since then. I was here when we wrote this.
Yeah, I know, and I, I think we took it out, you want to put it back in?
I do, I think that we should have shared utilities for the attached, we've already talked about, the detached obviously doesn't have shared utilities.
So at the last public hearing.
On this, before you were back, there was not, we didn't receive those comments from the public at that public hearing.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bruce.
It was, it was.
I'm sorry.
It had shifted.
Second, Bruce, you want to come in?
I don't see any need for a comment in our regulation as to whether the, the utilities are split or not split.
Okay.
We don't need to have it in here, simple as that. The person who owns the building can decide, if they want to invest in splitting the electric, the utilities, they can invest in it. And if they don't, yeah, maybe it makes the rental communications and the rental relationship a little more complicated, but that's their choice. They own the building, they're going to make the investment in creating an ADU.
I don't think it's necessarily going to encourage just a familial contact.
Correct.
Which is what the original intention was.
I don't think, I mean, I think you can still rent and just tell them they owe you so much money a month, and it's not going to discourage.
Or don't tell them there's no utility charge, it's just an extra, add on something, five hundred a month or whatever, you know.
Anyway, so.
But the owner of the building.
That's the reason we took it out was to, we don't need to mandate that. Okay, where are we now?
Dave, can I?
I was just going to say those were the primary changes you covered.
Right, this is not something we've talked about before in this, but is there a way to?
You may be scared, Melissa.
I know, I know, that's my job. We talk about, you know, requiring one off, off-street paved parking spot. Is there a way to encourage, not mandate, but encourage a covered parking spot, an actual, an additional garage space to go with that?
I think that's putting, that's a hardship on the owner.
No, but if we, if we allowed, like, if you add an extra garage space, it doesn't go to your square footage about this.
No, you kind of have to meet.
I think that's a hardship on the owner, I hear you, I know what you're saying, but.
Melissa, the answer to the question is no.
No, okay. So many realtors know, I know, say that extra cars in, in driveways are bad for property value.
Well, but all of this is going to be additional traffic and additional cars, everything that we're approving or talking about.
Yeah. Okay, are we down to the last one? The ADU accommodation, do people have?
Where are you, Dave, I'm sorry?
The last pair.
Oh, the ADA, why does my keep going off?
This was just an attempt to help accommodate things like wheelchair clearances.
Around spaces.
Bathroom spend, bathrooms have to be.
Commonly added, or are there towns doing this as well?
No.
Oh, no, oh, okay.
It's not common, but it's a pretty good idea.
This is in response to the public hearings.
Oh, okay.
See, what we could do though is, is, you know, granted, given the light potential for uncertainty as to the need, and, and I think we, we should, we need to get some assurance that it's going to get built, and not just applied for so they can have a bigger space. We need to know that it got built, and that's why we approved it. My thought is just, by virtue of the way we're, we're writing this language, the attached accessory, or the, excuse me, yeah, the access. The accessory structures that are separate are going to be subject to the special exception process, and so there could be a variety of, of ways that, and reasons for, you know, objecting to those applications. But under the attached accessory unit, which we're giving by right.
No, we're not giving by right, public, we have a site plan requirement, they come to us with a site plan.
By right is a common term applied to that.
No, it's not, that's, that's not a common term, by right means they don't have to come to us. They have to come to us with a site plan.
They have to come to the town for approval of the site.
They have to bring it to us.
All right. So for an attached accessory dwelling, they have to bring it to us to examine the site plan?
Correct.
Right, but. My point was simply going to be that if you want the extra ten percent, we could require that that application be submitted for special exception.
Okay, I, I think that they have to show us a drawing, and we can ask Hank and our building department whether or not this qualifies, and get their opinion, and I, I don't think that if it's inside.
Well, it's your opinion.
She's shaking her head.
Is this something we shouldn't be adding? Because we can't regulate it, or you can't regulate it?
Enforcement?
Yeah.
You want to, you want to ask that question? Why does this have to be ADA compliant, is that really a question you want people coming in to you with?
Sorry.
It doesn't have to be compliant, but if you have special needs, then.
Then you get more space.
Then you get more space if you show that it's compliant.
Yeah. How are you going to approve someone's special needs?
Exactly.
You know what, we don't prove that they are special needs, they're just saying they want to design it that way.
Constructed to the standard.
ADA standards, that's all it needs.
Okay.
Right, so future flexibility.
And if we need a better definition or, or more clarity on that, we can do that. And I think that was, Mr. I understand.
So as this exists, if I, if I want to do some extra credit on my building project here, and I want to make it totally ADA compliant, I get ten percent?
That's what it says, it doesn't require special needs.
Understood.
Theoretically, make a compelling case to add the ten percent to the living room and make the living room, or the kitchen bigger.
No, it has to be compliant.
But kitchens tend to need to be bigger for handicap access, for wheelchairs under the car.
They need a turn, yeah.
Turn radius.
Everything has to be bigger.
But that's for them to decide.
I guess, I guess then I would add, I would ask you as the commission, is, is the increase to, by ten percent necessary based on the new numbers? You, you, you kind of came to consensus.
I think it's an effort to encourage the, the construction of spaces that are suitable for the handicap.
Right.
Right.
And that, that will also, that would also entail the entry, the doors, everything like that, you can't just put a step up and then say it's ADA.
Right.
Can't have no step.
No, no step. So.
Anyway, can we have you edit this and bring it to us next time for a discussion and potential?
The within, within the house. I'm a little confused, because if you add on to a house, you're not going to be able to change the whole roof to kind of envelop an addition. A lot of times, you have like a little, a little wing to kind of integrate that addition into an existing roof, you know, it's.
If they share a wall, there, it's attached.
I will look at that, at those definitions.
You know what I mean, no, it's hard to add on to a house a lot of times.
Just to be sure, yeah, what we were trying to negate was, again, that, that attached breezeway or just that.
Right.
Right, so, so let me take it with that.
Okay.
The objective here is for the commission, the next time, to vote to set a public hearing for the document that we're going to look at.
Okay.
And we have to do that in July, on the, I think it's the seventeenth of July. We don't meet on the fourth of July.
So we'll go through the, the calendar, make sure, you know, again, it'll be, it'll be a tax amendment, so we'll have to go to COG and so join.
It's got to go to planning.
And it's got to be planning, so, so we'll, we'll do the calendar, make sure, have to see how it fits.
Okay.
Okay, okay, let's move on to the next, which is.
Cannabis.
Cannabis, and there's a new dimension that the governor added.
So I, so I put a little memo together, I mean, I, I, I just kind of assumed that, that, that most of you remember your discussions when you, when you did the moratorium, because I wasn't here, but. So I think that the most important thing to, to mention tonight is there, there's no longer a cap on cannabis establishments, again, the two, the two establishments that were given a cap of one per twenty-five thousand in the original PA twenty-one, one law, one per, one, one retail establishment and one microcult bear. Last week, the governor signed a new bill that removed that cap. So there are no longer retail cannabis cats in the state law. Now, that doesn't mean individual municipalities could, could place a cap on their own, just like you do with your, your, your medical, medicinal marijuana you have today. You've got, I think, a cap of two in our current ordinance, so, again, the only thing is that there's no, it's not, most municipalities, you know, and their planners saying, listen, all we got to deal with is one.
Right.
Well, that's not true anymore, so, and I think that's the point.
Yep.
Is that it's not just one, under, under the state law. Again, we are, we are, you are empowered to, to develop your own regulation, therefore, you can do so.
Now, most, most people that I've heard about, then, is that they sort of follow the alcohol permitting process, where you have a hearing, and you have a public hearing, and you allow the, within a certain zone, like a business zone of some sort. I believe in the alcohol regulations, somewhere there's a limit in the number per town, is that the state statute?
That's a state statute, that's right, and again, that's a per capita number.
Okay.
One per thousand.
Package stores.
So, there is.
But not with restaurants and bars, right? So it's just.
Correct, package store though. Yeah, so, so you're correct, so my, you know, our, our background on this, I was involved in, in writing the full ordinance in Vernon before I came here, but by and large, the, the, the municipalities that are, are drafting regulations are placing them in select business districts or your commercial districts and allowing them by special exception, obviously a public hearing, very similar to how you deal with liquor stores. They are also, some are adding additional conditional criteria such as distance to schools or other.
Residents.
Not, not everyone, but, but some are including a, a distance requirement, some are including kind of additional application requirements, traffic analysis, essentially for the first ninety days, which is when traffic hits most of these, I mean, they've been eventually returned to, to kind of normal retail operations, but for the first ninety days, in fact, the state law allows us to, to bill during that period for, for traffic, traffic station, traffic control. But, um, traffic, uh, security plans, those kinds of things. And I think in my, in, in the memo I tried to point out, no matter all those things, the, the use really does act like a retail use.
Right.
It, it really does, it's nothing particularly extraordinary about these uses. You know, there, there's no congestion on site, so you're walking in and you're buying the product, you're parking, you're leaving, and.
It's very secure.
So, you know, and, and there, there are, you know, quite secure, quite secure, there's state requirements that are driving that. You've got, you know, locked vestibules for, for ID check, and then released into the, you know, into the store, the retail store.
Do you have a suggestion of how many, because the state took away the per capita number, do you have a suggestion of how many we would, or?
So I, I, I don't, I mean, I, I don't, and, I mean, I, I don't because we really don't have any other use in town, so I'm not sure.
What is the per capita under the state for liquor?
Yeah, I, I, we were just talking about that, it's, I mean, obviously, there's, it's one per, I mean, there's a bunch here, so I'm trying to think, in, in Vernon, we had thirty thousand people, and we had thirteen.
We have twenty-four thousand five hundred and seventeen people.
You probably capped it at about seven or eight.
In the pri, the state.
But I get, I get that number.
And the state would have been one, right? We would have been allowed one, or no?
Originally.
Originally.
So under the original legislation, yes.
One.
One, it would have been one, correct.
And we.
Who decides?
We could designate the, the zone, the districts to be one, the.
Seems like a whole lot to me.
Yes, yes, that's, that's how I would do it, I would, I would say the use is permitted in, in this district.
Yeah.
And then, and again, I, I think I put in the, the memo when I was, again, just looking, so for medicinal, the medicinal retail, you allowed it in all three of your commercial zones, B one, you know, B one, two, and three.
This would be different because it's retail, though?
Yeah, I understand.
So is it more, is it less about per capita than it is where the areas in town we would actually feel comfortable this being? And then we back it from there, like, where the, where could they be, and then we back into how many we would want?
That's a very good approach, that, that, that's, where do, where do you want this kind of use to go?
Right, it's like, I mean, at Tolmeto, you know, or?
What part of the community?
Well, that's, no, because that's not B water.
Exactly.
But north of Big Y, and south of, I don't know, you know?
Nothing in town?
South of, I wouldn't put any in, in the center of town.
I don't know.
Why not?
Why not?
Because of, I, I just personally wouldn't.
No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
As a discussion, I'm just.
The center zone.
Exactly, I wouldn't put any.
You've got cigar shops and everything else there.
Yeah, liquor stores, wine shops.
Yeah, I mean, there's so many bars downtown, right?
Yeah.
I don't have.
Cigars aren't against federal law.
Anyway, so.
I would offer that in the last, probably two years ago, we had discussion in here, in this room, on, maybe, it would have been more than two years ago, three years ago, on the number of liquor stores, we were informed at that time that the state, the policy they were administering was one liquor store for about five thousand residents, because the limit for Simsbury was portrayed at that time as five. Five was the limit for Simsbury, and we were around that. I think we had opportunity, but anyway.
That had to do with tariff, wasn't it?
George gets the real number.
Wasn't that the tariff situation where there are two liquor stores?
I remember when there used to be more.
Anyway, the question is, George, on this, for our purposes, we have until.
Can't get in.
Jackie, excuse me, can you guys? Pay attention. Excuse me. For our purposes, we have to have our ducks in line by November first, is that correct?
I think November eighth, but yeah.
But.
First.
Can we extend the moratorium?
Yes.
I, I, I would, I would obviously consult our.
I mean, if we didn't.
I suspect a reasonable extension of moratorium is.
We could have done eighteen months out of the gap.
Okay.
Could have done eighteen months, absolute, so.
But we, looking at.
Working on.
We're going to have no meetings in August, one meeting in September, two meetings in October, and November eighth, we don't meet because it's election, so that.
We could do a special meeting in September.
We could do a special meeting, but we don't have to if you extend the moratorium. But we do need to get ourselves in position to approve certain things, our, our regulations by October sometime. So that means that we'd like to see a draft of a regulation for, I'd say, the second meeting in September. And then that gives us two meetings to discuss it or kick it down the road, one or the other.
Mr., I'm not sure I understand the reasoning for extending the moratorium.
If we don't extend the moratorium.
Right.
What happens, the state statute?
So, so under the state, the state statute says that the uses are to be treated as other similar uses are in your community.
Okay, so if we don't have a regulation.
We would probably make the, we would probably take the position that it would be most similar to how we treat liquor stores or so.
So then they could be anywhere.
Those districts.
They could be anywhere, we'd have less control.
Then, why not decide on where we want to put them? Sooner rather than later, is I guess what I mean.
On the twentieth, if you don't mind, I, I mean, we're going to be here, so I, I think we bring in the old-fashioned big zoning map and.
Great.
And, and, and do that kind of work, like, you know, put it in the middle of the table and, and have that discussion.
Great.
When?
Next meeting.
Probably the best approach.
The twentieth of this month.
I don't see why we wouldn't, I mean.
Fine, fine, I'm just looking at the, I'm just looking at the.
We can at least see how a discussion goes.
Sure, no, no, that's no problem, I think it's a good idea.
Well, I think, just a word of caution, I think it's a little premature to presume that there's four votes in favor of Kevin. there's four votes in favor of having cannabis sales in Simsbury.
How?
Agonizing over the, where they could go, or where they might be, or how many.
Sure, staff is only working from the moratorium approval, but said to work on regulations, but yeah, I understood that.
But if there aren't four votes, that's a waste of time. It might sway people around the fence one way or the other, too, so. I'm not suggesting.
I would say, no matter, you need to take action in your zoning ordinance to prohibit them then.
Right.
So, we would be working towards certainly an amendment of that sort.
Okay, so, the next step is to look at the map.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. So, there's no, there hasn't been a vote to even approve cannabis sales in Simsbury at all yet?
So, let's remind you that, so the governor signed.
Right.
A bill allowing, just retail cannabis, same way. And it said that if the locality doesn't take action.
Right.
Those uses are approved and permitted as other similar uses are in your community.
Right, okay.
So, that would require us to take affirmative action at some point, and so, you know, this commission, back in November of '21, passed a moratorium.
Right.
So, that would keep everything at bay, so no new, of course, I'm not giving out licenses yet, but, anyway.
Understood, okay.
In order to work on regulations.
But, so when would we vote to allow or disallow the use at all? That's what I don't understand.
That's the conversation, wants the commission.
Does that come first?
When can, can we vote to allow cannabis or disallow cannabis?
When we have.
Without a regulation.
Oh, so, I think I'm misunderstanding the order in which things have to happen here. So, we need to create all of these regulations, we can't allow it to be sold and then regulate, one has to come before the other, is what you're saying?
Yeah, we can say we're not going to, we can tell George, forget this.
You can choose to direct staff to develop language that prohibits the use and hold a public hearing and do that, you could do that as well.
Okay.
So, that creates a regulation?
We're just working affirmatively.
Understood, okay.
Well, the regulation wouldn't be effective until after the public hearing and a vote confirming.
Right, right.
But you may vote yea or nay.
Public hearing could be about a regulation that would prohibit.
You might vote up or down depending upon the specific regulation that's being promulgated.
Okay.
Right.
Now, there's also nothing, I mean, you have, this is a discussion item, there's certainly no, no reason you couldn't have that discussion, this public meeting, you can have this discussion about whether you should or you shouldn't.
I think we should do that.
I mean, there's nothing preventing you from doing that.
We should do that next time, as we're looking at the map, get the commission to vote whether or not we want regulations to be drafted, permitting it or prohibiting it. But, in either case, we have to create a regulation.
Yes.
Whether we don't want it or we do want it.
Okay.
And if we do want it, then we need some more details about where we're going to permit it and how we control how many units, how many people are allowed to do it in the district.
Right, okay.
That sort of thing.
I understand, I think I misunderstood the point of the agenda item. So, we're discussing whether, we're discussing the date at which we're going to have the actual cannabis discussion?
Yeah, this was.
We're discussing the regulation.
Yeah, so Tucker, the reason I brought it up was because, one, we've got a moratorium that expires in November, and November is going to hit us pretty close, and it's going to just be here. And so, I wanted to put that memo together to say, this is where we are, you passed the moratorium.
Okay.
To say that we would work on regulations, so I brought that back with that memo, trying to just get an explanation of where you were and how we dealt with those uses today.
Okay.
And options.
And whether or not we're going to treat it as a land use issue where we permit it on a property, that permission would go with that property.
Right, okay.
So, it's a matter of us having to, if we're going to allow it, deciding that it's safe and correct in that spot, because that becomes a right in that property.
Okay. Understood, so?
Okay.
So, next time, I'll have, we'll have the big map, we'll have a more workshop session style than we can, but I'll also put together some bullets on, you know, at least to get going on the affirmative ordinance, just to say, this is, you know, this is how we would clearly deal with it, I think, and I put words in there, but it would be, you know, normally a special exception that required a public hearing, these would be kind of the conditions that would go, these would be the districts that it would fit in.
Okay.
And it's not, that's not that complicated, you know what they are.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, there's a question from the floor. Can you recommend?
Sorry.
She's going to have.
No, this is.
Okay.
This is not.
Okay, thank you.
So, I don't think you need any action tonight, we'll just put it on the agenda.
Great. Have a look at the map.
Without objection.
Great.
Okay, anything else?
I, well, I'd actually like to get a little bit on the record on what we actually think we're going to do when we, when we talk about this land use. I'll be at, I'll be at a military obligation, so I won't be here when we discuss this. I would be kind of interested in talking about, a little bit more about where people think this kind of activity ought to be prohibited, or ought not to be prohibited. I, for one, I'm not sure I see why it can't be regulated in a similar manner to liquor. Does anyone else have any, like, comments?
I was mentioning to Donna, I wouldn't want, so there are liquor stores, sorry, there are liquor stores in the center of town, so I would not be for having marijuana sales in the center. It's already very congested, a lot of traffic, and we have kids that walk down in or in the center. So, and there's, I can come up with a whole host of reasons, but that would be my thought. So, as George had referenced, you know, not near schools, not near residents, so that's why I had just briefly said I would be in favor, if we go forward, if everybody votes that way, of having the north and south end, and then we figure out the districts, but that would be my thought.
Okay.
But other people have other.
Right.
Other people have other thoughts.
Oh, yeah, of course, right. He's asking, so.
Yeah, because with the center of town, for one, when it comes to traffic, we always obviously have to look at that, but increasing sidewalks, making more bike racks, making things more walkable and bikeable is a way better way of reducing traffic congestion than banning, I think, certain businesses. But, there's a liquor store downtown.
Right.
What is it, Valley Spirits, is that what it's called?
There's more than one.
Yeah.
So, there's that liquor store, that's huge. They card, I know.
How does he know this number?
My thing, back in college, I got up on their wall. They don't seem to allow minors to, they don't seem to allow minors to buy liquor there that I've ever seen, and I tried really hard when I was a kid. And it seems like these marijuana stores, now granted, I've never been in one because I legally can't, but they, from people that know, tell me that there's like a buzzer system, like, there's a significant security operation that they have going on there.
They don't even let you in without.
Right, so, so I think it, being around where people walk, for one, I would love for kids to walk and bike downtown more than they do currently, but I'm not sure I understand the reasoning behind keeping it physically away from where, like, younger people will be, if there's a liquor store right there that has less of a security operation than a cannabis dispensary would have.
That's, that's an opinion.
Right, right.
And that's fine, and we understand that.
Right, okay.
And, but we're not going to fix the error in the placement of liquor stores of the past by approving marijuana shops in close proximity to the liquor stores. That's not a solution. But liquor stores are where they are, and they're staying there for the most part, till the owners decide they don't want to. And then they can move their business within 1,000 feet with the same license. So, the issue of where the liquor stores are is just a distraction from the underlying issue here.
Right.
Why do we want liquor, marijuana stores in Simsbury? Answer that one for me. You got a good answer for that?
Me?
Yeah.
Well.
You want to have some sort of insight on the discussion about the land use, underlying issues.
Well, I mean, to answer your question, it seems like Avon prohibited retail cannabis. I'd love to steal their lunch and get that tax base if they refuse to. That's why.
So, you think, you justify it because there's a tax opportunity.
Right, well, I don't see a huge downside either, I just, because I'm not convinced.
I'm not trying to torture you, Tucker, I just.